Okay, thank you. I'm Tim Skogut, Chairman of the Shastbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shastbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, October 1st, 2018. First, let me check, does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
No. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting on September 17th that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Seconded by Joe. Any discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes?
I've got a couple. Paragraph eight, road foreman report. There's a sentence that says that we're short two people because of accident. I think we should insert the non-work-related accident. It doesn't imply that it was work-related, but it doesn't say not either. And you did mention that.
Yeah, off-duty accident, yeah.
Off-duty accident, sorry. Off-duty or non-work-related accident.
I'm trying to find it. Because of off-duty accidents?
Yes. Two employees are not, two employees are out because of accident, for accidents.
Got it, okay. Change that to off-duty accidents.
And in paragraph 10, about the second, or section 10, second part of the paragraph, where it says that the places will be inspected by health officer or zoning administrator, it was clearly stated in their proposal that it was going to be the state fire marshal or the town health officer. It did not say anything about the zoning administrator.
All right, let's check that, because we do have that Y-L-A language we can look at and make sure we get it right. Yeah, there's the planning, and then there's the actual language, so I want to make sure I get the actual language. Are there the governor's show inspection report for fire safety with the zoning administrator for annual inspection there? Fire safety or health officer, correct.
It doesn't say that the zoning administrator has to inspect, just has to report, or is that right?
Yeah, the fire safety, why don't we report to the zoning administrator?
Okay.
And that's all I can remember. Fire, fire. Do you have any others? All right, in favor of approving the minutes for September 17th, say aye.
Aye.
So those minutes are approved. Five zero zero. Dave, are you fine with this in-scratch copy?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And then we have some amended minutes for our Shire's public housing hearing. Draft minutes were supplied with the application that requested more detail of conversations that took place. Those minutes were amended and circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
I'll second it, but that was a long time ago.
Seconded by Art.
Right. So I had to rethink that.
Any additions, corrections to those minutes?
We can't get in trouble if there's something that isn't correct because we don't remember. It just was a long time ago.
No recall.
The additions to this, we're requesting by the state to flush out the public comments.
Okay.
The comments that were added were taken directly off the tape that's available.
Okay, all right.
So we just literally transcribed it directly from the tape.
It wasn't somebody's reminder, is that right?
No, no.
Okay.
It was made in the tape.
I have no problem with that.
Good. All in favor of approving the minutes from the Shire's housing, the amended minutes from the Shire's hearing on April 11th, say aye.
Aye.
So those minutes are approved, five zero zero. I have check warrant number eight totaling $124,746.42. Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Major items here are $2,500 to Bennington County Sheriff, $4,400 to Business Card Services. What is that one?
That is, most of that is for computer purchases. There was a computer for the general, a computer for assistant town clerk, and a laptop for the DPDW.
David Hosley, $11,000 for roadside mowing, $7,700 Howard P. Fairfield, Inc.
That was for our Buffalo turbine, our new power blow.
The blower, yep. $8,700 to Pete's.
That was for the Greater Tires.
Pete's Tire Department.
$1,900 to QC QA Labs.
Those are our testing engineers for the garage. We pay them directly, they're our employees.
For the garage, okay. $3,000.
Congress.
Yeah.
$3,000 to Sycamore Landscaping for cemetery mowing, $7,000 to TAM, $67,000 to US Bank.
This is the first bond payment for the year. By the way, they didn't do it, this is the first payment, the second payment is in May.
For the garage bond?
Yep.
Okay. $29,000 to Vermont Tennis Court Servicing.
Pickle balls.
Pickle ball.
$3,900 to William E. Daley, and those are the items over $1,000. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number eight, say aye.
Aye.
All aye.
Aye.
So check warrant number eight in the amount of $124,746.42 is approved, five zero zero. Next, I've got a retirement warrant, number nine, in the amount of $8,329.99. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Art. Seconded by Tony. Any discussion on the retirement warrant? All in favor of approving retirement warrant number nine, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. So retirement warrant number nine in the amount of $8,329.99 is approved, five zero zero. And finally, I have payroll warrant number six in the amount of $21,042.86.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. So payroll warrant number six in the amount of $21,042.86 is approved, five zero zero. Any public comments?
I just wondered, is anything related with the information from the state or anything?
Haven't heard back from them yet, but I did have an instant conversation with one of your neighbors today. It made a couple of things occur to me, that is, you were talking about your party and the dog barking, they played the tape, and the dog is clearly at the fence line barking. And it hurt to me that that would be a time for you to possibly pursue a signing complaint based on our ordinance, because the dog is only exempt if the working farm dog is barking in order to herd, protect livestock or poultry, or protect crops. If it's staring at you and aggressing your lawn and barking directly at you, it's not really protecting anything. It's annoying and aggressive. So I talked to him about that, he wants to call me tomorrow, and gave you Paul McCann's number at one point.
Yeah.
Should talk to him about that, because that part just struck me as, well, that's not, you know, if the dog's barking in the middle of the night, you're just going to have a hell of a time for proving it's not threatening. But if he's at the fence line, I think you actually have a case with that one. The other thing that I heard, which I didn't realize, is that cameras have been put up facing your property. Now, it may not meet a statutory level of some types of things, but I would really be interested in what someone would think about just being plain harassment. It's something you might want to discuss with an attorney. This is the, pointing into your property is kind of odd.
Yeah.
The one that's pointed across the road is cross-colored roadway. Everything in the background is just collateral, and there's not much you can do about that. I did ask the question straight out whether or not we can refuse to license a farm dog, which I think is going to be, no, it just can't be. And the other one is if we can address the breed as being inappropriate. I'm sure the answer is that's what we, because that's going to open a can of worms too. But basically, you know, the law's pretty clear, unless you can bring something like a barking at the fence line, you might have to get legal counsel, like what as a neighborhood that's been disrupted by these dogs, what are your remedies because of this law?
Right.
You know, this is clearly states that the town shall not be able to regulate the barking when running at large, you have a working farm dog that is on the property farm by the perches of, president's boy, blah, blah, blah. If it's barking, there's a herd and all that other stuff. If it's running around barking, I have 10 acres up this way, you know, prove there's something in the woods there. It gets very difficult. But if you're in your yard, and it's that fence barking at you, and you're filming it, you know, I think that's a different matter.
That was agreed. If there's no herd, fence scenario.
There's another one. But again, what it's going to require is if the dog's in, like that big one towards the back, and there's nothing there, and it's barking, because you're outside, I mean, is that protecting anything, or is it just being an annoyance?
True.
And that's something to take up in that group too.
Right.
But it's going to require you to go to Paul. Paul can assist you, but you would have to sign the complaint, you would have to go to court.
Right.
And that's about the best I think we're going to get. We're going to get more answers, but I think the answer's going to be just what I said.
Yeah.
They're not going to change this, and we're not going to have much leeway. But there are options. I don't think you can bark, you know, just for no reason, especially when you, when you, what I keep hearing from the neighbors is you're outside, and it's like pointed at you, barking.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's correct, and you go into court and say that, then I think that makes it a little bit more reasonable.
Right.
And a little bit more unreasonable, but the dog just be out there carrying on it, especially if it's knowing when the field is occupied. It's not a crop field, it's a grazing field.
Correct.
So, I mean, there are things you can do, but it's going to take steps from you and the other neighbors to sign complaints to get it to go anywhere.
Right.
Because our hands are kind of tied, I mean, the state law always subverts some certainty to all those. Can I give Paul a call tomorrow? I'll give Paul a call, and get back if you want.
Yeah.
So what you can do, keep the tape, and maybe can we start it that way? If the neighbors can get together, maybe you want to address some of these concerns with an attorney. Maybe there's parts of the syllabus that can be followed, but again, that's kind of out of our area.
Right, I understand. A little more interested in probably getting reissued with the license for next year.
Yeah, well, I've asked, I'll let you know, but I'm sure they're going to say you can't do that.
Right.
Because farms are defined under Vermont law, it's clear that a farm meets a lot of requirements. It's a farm. And if we were allowed to say, well, we're going to decide what farm is worthy of a dog, then, you know, to that, that would be, and then, like I said, if you start getting into the breed, what's an acceptable breed to have on the property, that's quite an overreach too, so.
Right. It's a very sticky situation.
Yes, it is.
So I knew that coming in, we knew that.
Yeah, yeah. But maybe we should just take it up that approach. You know, it was daylight during that graduation party.
Yeah, I actually have it.
Yeah, you have it all taped.
Well, I have an envelope from the other day, too.
Oh, good, okay.
Good.
Well, that's the best way to address it, I think. And the best way to address it is sign a complaint, get down before a judge, make him, maybe you win, maybe you lose, I don't know.
Right, I'm worried for God.
You have to start pulling the judge.
I absolutely, I'd like to come up and visit. When it first started, I was like, just come see what's going on, because people won't perpetuate things. This is not.
No, I've heard from a lot of people up there, I know, it's an issue, so.
Right, and then I go, I did my homework.
Yeah. The best thing to do is to have Paul help you, there's a certain paperwork to be done, you know, stated, and if you will, sign the complaint and get it down before the judge, and have the judge decide whether or not this is violating the town's ordinance.
Well, like I said before, she doesn't understand that dogs need training. Every day, a home re萌, it needs to be trained. Everything too, it's imperative. It doesn't matter what it is, it could be a squirrel running down a road. It doesn't matter, everything's imperative for it. And that's what it's jobs, but you have to train it to let it know what is and what isn't.
Yeah.
All right. We knew where this was going, I just was curious to see what.
We'll keep moving along. I'll give Paul a call, and I'll let you know when I get back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, children's report. Tony. Did you send me something?
Yes, it is.
Dropbox.
Okay. The big story here, as you can see, the taxes are coming in, woo-hoo. Gotten about $300,000 for the, well, that's considerably behind last year, but that's understandable, given how late they went out. So they're rolling in, means we're going to be fine with the line of credit, we're not going to have to increase that, which I was worried about for a while, but we're going to be, we're going to be fine with cash flow.
Okay.
Nothing else particularly interesting going on. That, that's just the garage cash, I'll remind you, that's, that's how it works, is we write checks out of the general fund, and then it's sort of replenished by the, by the bond. So those are checks that you've already approved elsewhere. And then it just, it just basically zeroes out the checks you already wrote to, just to get everything backwards. And you can see there's the checks down, under dispersments was pretty hefty last month, but that's largely the garage. If you want to go down to the bottom, that just shows you the balances on our other big funds. Garage bond is, as you'd expect, it's down below $800,000 now because of, we've been really getting into the work. If we look at this year versus last year for revenues versus expenditures, it's pretty similar. We're spending a little bit more quickly than last year, but it's, as you can see, it's only a couple of percentage points, and it's mostly timing. If you wanted to look at the, or unless, does anybody have any questions about this?
Some of the expenses that may be reimbursed to $16,000, that is for work at the cemetery, will be reimbursed on the separate cost, but we've got to pay the workforce. Except a few large things, unexpected, the Greater Tires, one of that's $90,000. Three computers that burned out at the same time, that's $5,000. So when you get to the, they flattened out.
Yep. Three computers for $5,000, right?
Yeah, laptop and two desktops, and end of workables.
If you wanted to look at the other spreadsheet, there's not really all that much going on, but it's mainly water, you see down there at 260. It's still, that's, that's all late payments, and there's, I think that Jim's really working on getting that under control.
Yeah, sure is.
But, but none of that came in on time, that's all late, and very late.
Yeah, let's go ahead and mention that our delinquencies in the water department, we just had a water board meeting right before this.
Uh-huh.
Are down to $4,400. It wasn't very many years ago that we were looking at tens of thousands of dollars in delinquencies.
Yep.
And it's largely a matter of Jim McGinnis, our water superintendent, being diligent and consistent in applying the rules for late bills that we've, that we've put in place, and the delinquencies have gotten less and less over time.
Yep. It's a, it's like an additional full-time job, but not even full-time, I guess he's, he's got other jobs, but it's, and, you know, and there are people who will, will pay in installments, they, they just pay a little bit every month, and if they're, it's just, that's just how they do it. And they, they take a lot of extra work from, for him, but yeah, he's, he's really on top of it now. Down below, if you look at 280, that's just what it looks like when we get the, the money from the garage bond, it's just in and out. So you see the $70,000, 394, that's, that's just the checks that were written in September on the garage bond. So the money comes in, it goes out again. Anybody have any questions about any of that? Mostly what I'm doing is continuing to deal with questions from the public about their tax bills. I want to remind everybody, if they don't have them yet, they should give me a call. There, we get some undeliverables back every day, there's stacked like, maybe this many, that Deanie is trying to track down those, those people, but you still have to pay it even if you've changed your mailing address. You don't, you don't get out of paying your taxes by changing your mailing address. So if, if you are new to the house, you don't have the tax bill yet, or if for some reason you don't have it, just give me a call, I will get you another copy. I've only had one person shouting profanities at me, so that's, that's good. It's, but this is still early days.
Shouting profanities at you because they didn't want to pay their taxes?
He had filed his homestead late, and he felt that I should have gotten him a replacement bill faster than the state got it to me, but.
Well, I'm sorry you had to hear that.
Yeah, it's just part of the job.
Yeah, no.
Well, okay.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Our roads foreman is taking a day off, I understand.
Yes, it is a vacation day today, so it'll be the abbreviated roads report, and then if it stops raining, we could get more roads graded, but this weather certainly doesn't help us out at all. The recycled asphalt shingle project for Myers Road is supposed to take place tomorrow, but the weather isn't great, so I can't give you the determination whether or not that's going to be going, I'll be up there in the morning to see how things change. East Road, we did get profiled last week, or we claimed it as it is here, last week. The surface is ready for paving, only question is when will that happen? It's been two months since the target date for paving, and what I understand is a couple weeks out at best now, so it's all, anyone who's been anywhere near Bennington the last couple of months, enough we've done, that's where it's all going, and our little stretch keeps getting knocked down a little bit, so hopefully by the end of the month, it'll finally be paved. And that's about the best we can project with that. The rest of it is, they've been ditching and grading as much as they can, I know I've got some calls, as Mike, you know, a little surprised, but trying to get out there, it's really is a weather factor, you can't grade when it's going to rain, it just doesn't work. But the goal is, there are no more projects, the big project we had, we've gotten extended until next spring so that we can just move on. We still do have and will have for at least several more weeks, be down two crew members who are injured off the job. We do have a temporary worker starting tomorrow. Who will release can run all equipment for us when he's available. And you're also all aware, there's a great shortage of qualified people to run our equipment and everything, so we're trying to move the home as best we can. But after, the East Road project, it won't take much of the crew's time, but it's more the foreman, the surveying, spraying field when they get some paving. The RAS project is a one-day project on Myers Road, whatever you can get. It's just going to be to winter prep and grading the roads anyway for winter, so we still have a significant amount of time left to do that if we can get a break with the weather. Other issues are, we have a lot of trucks that have recycling food to bring them up again for winter, but also just to get them in a state of better repair. We've been sending a lot of work from works, Bennington, for work on the trucks. Trying to move a lot of downtime or work time to the garage, being mechanics, which with six people I don't agree with, should be a priority for us, and with four, we just simply can't do it. People have to be out doing something else. So we're moving in that direction. The only other issue on the table tonight is Mike and Ron. Last year, this was the year we had scheduled to replace the, or update the trackless, which is our sidewalk flabishing. We found a good piece of equipment with Fairfield, it's used with 4,100 hours on it, it's a trackless MT5, which is the same model we have Ron and Mike went up and ran it around and tested it out. They think it's in good shape, and they recommend its purchase at the 14.5. And the 14.5 is the purchase plus some renovations to it, including the new center cam, which is a critical part of the entire piece of equipment. The lifespan on these things, some estimates from Canadian have a 15,000 hours, I think that's a little bit optimistic, but clearly this one has a lot of hours left on it, and it does three miles of sidewalk and occasional sweeping for us. So it's not, most of these things that are purchased new and used by hands, the new ones are really operating all the time. And that's why, that's why you see them moving into better terms in a 4,000, just they want to put those out, not just the faulty sidewalks, but it goes year-round. They're, they're really tremendous machines, if you have the type of community, you can use them everywhere else, so. You'd like to go ahead and pick that up. They're hauling it for us through tonight, this is everywhere, that's the board meeting, so we have an instant board meeting. But they have done food, we've looked at others of these and not been impressed, but this one they did like. It's for the buck. It's a, a new one of these, just give you an example, it's about $100,000 without attachments. Now, we have it to attach, so we can have it on, but we don't need any $5,000 side of the chain. A small deer, something like that, good enough to take the work, you know, is also going to be a lot of money. And it's not really ideal, this is, it's one task. Now, this thing, we can, we have a brush we can put on this week, the intersection in the spring and other areas when we need to do that. It has a boom on it, we could actually take it out and mow a corner if we have it, it has a lot of possibilities. And we have one over there that's just a pile of spare parts.
So it doesn't require a trade-in?
No, it'll trade in, this is great. We actually want to keep this one for the parts.
So, because what, snowball, blade or what?
No, we have one, we have it.
So it has no attachments?
No, we, we have it all.
Okay.
And that's, that's the, that's the best part of it, because the attachments, they would kill me with these things. But it's a good machine and all these attachments go right on it, so...
We have all the attachments we would like, or is there some...
Well, we have all the attachments that are practical for us to have.
Okay.
The problem is it's not exactly a speed game, if we took it from here and had to go do a job in the hollow, we let it do a job after they drive it out and after they drive it back, so there are better machines, I think, in the long run, which is another part of this, because you know, say a last five years, it's costing us three thousand a year, which you know, is not that bad compared to a lot of other things. And then as we right-size and reorganize the fleet, which is a task that Michael has ahead of him over the next couple of years, he settles in and decides where we're actually going with all this equipment, it may be that there's a better piece out there and we will have a big investment in the machine that we haven't really had the opportunity to evaluate where it fits in the long-term plans.
So we just basically want to replace what we've got? And we're not really looking to try and exploit the full potential of the machine, we're just going to use it for...
We're just going to use one, it'll sweep when we want it to sweep, it'll plow when we want it to sweep, I don't even want to sweep plowed. Put the snow blower on it, it does have a boom arm, but you know, we have other things that we can do with that and we also have lots of other tasks.
But we're going to be able to incorporate this equipment into doing other jobs.
Yeah, we do, yeah. And the spring goes out, you put the boom on it, goes sweeping around. And like I said, forty-one hundred hours, it wouldn't go much further than right down here, and it fits in the salt shed, when this gets knocked down, we'll be able to park it somewhere conveniently. And you know, it's only going around here, so the hours are really going to be very minimal. Now with proper maintenance, it can go for a long time.
That's a heavier duty unit, a jack deer or something like that. That's industrial, which is...
Yeah, 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 the deer, like we have a deer over there, but not in deer, well I wouldn't judge deer, but you know, at least what things are built for, this thing, the MT is a municipal tractor, it's built for work.
So in light of the fact that Ron and Mike have approved it, I'm going to motion that we buy it?
Second. We have a motion from Art to purchase a sidewalk machine for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Is that the right number?
Yes.
Seconded by Ken. What was that last part you said about where we're going to park it?
Well, just using the salt shed out here as an example for just to park it, but I don't want to buy it.
For very long?
No, 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 just to get us through this winter as the transition.
So we're going to need to build something to park it in?
Well, what we need is a small little shed and then just a little storage area around it, because it really needs to be practical, it really needs to be up here and plugged in. But when we look towards renovation of this building and as the garage is done, we plan expenses for next year, taking down that garage, I mean, there's a whole site plan I have for outside here, and you just pop the garage like around the back here, it'd be a little small, a little smaller, to park the tractor, which is about a little bit wider than this table and maybe as long, and just park it in there and that way the sidewalk guy can come right down here. And we'll probably also, I don't know, people like to come get a little salt, people like to get their pale sand, I don't know if we should have this here, I think it might be safer to have it here than send people to the garage and have them back in the salt shed and everything else to get their stuff. I mean, remember we had the free sand down here last year, it might be safer just to, hey, put a little pile out here, we'll have two little signs, you keep the salt and sand, you know, and we'll need a little salt here so the guy can shovel it in, but it didn't work out.
Now the MT5 is a two thousand six, you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Two thousand six, but it only has forty-one hundred hours on it. I was worried about the age of the machine, which in terms of age, the lifeline is put at twelve to fifteen years, which just puts this one at end of life, but apparently it's hasn't been used for...
Most factories are using it now.
Any industrial stuff, it lives by hours.
Right.
And this has a very, a very reasonable amount of hours. Like I said, the towns that use it, I mean, they trade them in early because they run it year-round and they just expect it to go and go and go, and we're just not going to put that many hours on this thing.
On average, how many hours do we put on that equipment?
I don't actually know that, I might pull that up for the meeting, because that could have based on our snow blower's hours.
Right.
But if you figure twenty, say thirty snowstorms a year, so a hundred and fifty hours, three hundred hours per year, you know, these thirty snowstorms and plows with ten hours, which is a long time, about three miles a road, three miles a sidewalk, you know, that's three hundred hours a year, plus some sweeping, maybe four hundred miles a year, it'll take us ten years to get through another four thousand miles, so, you know.
Yeah. All right, any more discussion?
I was just going to say, good purchase, I was looking online at some of those and they're very, very pricey.
Yeah, very pricey.
I looked at a two thousand six with low, I think it was seven hundred and something hours on it, and that was seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yes, that's it too.
Yeah, and that's what I said, it was lightening.
Yeah, so I made a mistake by having that.
Right, right.
Using it.
Okay. All in favor of purchasing a sidewalk machine for fourteen thousand dollars? Say aye.
Aye.
So that motion is approved, five zero zero.
And I think that's all I have for the road report.
I'd like to make a comment or something. Route seven A is really getting pounded with all the trucks and we can't stop them, but the cracks, because of the concrete base underneath, the cracks are getting pounded out even worse and it's really annoying to people who live right on seven A through town, because especially when...
Hey?
You hear it.
Hey, yeah.
And especially when they go back empty, now they don't have the suspension hammers and the cracks are getting worse, can we just say something, the state say this and that?
I actually had two people in today wondering when the road was going to get repaired, but I asked last year, they said it wasn't even on the list, so I'll get on the garage tomorrow, I'll just go on and say, are there any plans and...
At least fill in the cracks, you've got this hammer in hand.
Usually they do before winter, I haven't seen them, and I know, and you can hear them, and I'm sure Kenny was in them.
Let MT trailers, they take trailers to me, they can drill.
I think it was last year I said to Brian Mett, you know, it's kind of like your trucks, you know, do you feel any responsibility to hammer and carry it, he says, we're told we can't touch that road, it's hands-off.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would love to.
Someone asked me today, well, can't you guys go out and put some pad down?
For a street car, that's really going to recap it on the suspension.
Well, I puzzled a couple of years ago when they paved from three thirteen into Manchester, a road I drive on frequently, taking my kids to school, never stopped me even paying them, oh, you know, nice new coat of pavement on it, couldn't really understand. And this road out here, that gets real industrial use, daily, six days a week.
Yeah.
And it's desperate for it, it's odd how they pick, I don't know how they do it, I mean, new thirty before Scranton was like a battlefield, you know, it's this, some of these roads are really bad and then some of the ones that aren't bad at all get paved.
Maybe they'll pick a number.
Yeah, I'll inquire from the state.
Ken, is that more of the least state that we're concerned about?
Let's let Dave inquire first, how about, and then... Then we'll, I mean, we could pass the motion now if we wanted to, I guess...
Well, I'll make a motion, Dave, look into what it takes to get the attention of the state, if that's, that's kind of crude.
How about a motion that says that we have concerns about the condition of roads of seven A through town, through the center of Shastberry. Yeah, so we have a motion from Art to express, to be trans, that the select board has concerns about the condition of Route seven A through the center of Shastberry.
It's affecting people's livelihood or affecting people's living conditions.
So that we have concerns that the condition of the road is affecting living conditions in the center of Shastberry?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So read that back to me, Dave, what did I say?
You said call the state in the morning.
Yeah.
Well, especially on the select board and many residents that I've heard from too have wanted to know when this is going to get fixed, because it is, people are telling me they can't sleep to the trucks, especially they were doing the night work, the trucks are going at it at night and everyone's complaining about the vacuum.
Point being, the select board is concerned about the effect this is having on people's lives, yes?
Yep.
One thing I've been thinking about, you were saying, you and Mike were saying that we wanted to rent a mower to work on, a brush machine really, to work on brush, with the idea of looking at what we could get done and possibly taking back the mowing again. I'm in favor of that, but I think we ought to plan on having our mower come back next year and still continue, you know, while that's happening, we'll have, we'll have the manpower to do these experiments with different equipment.
Yeah, Mike and I have been deciding we would be too enthusiastic and we're going to see if Dave positively will come back in the spring and will we evaluate for the fall, because I think we were getting a little bit ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to make an action then.
We're going to call him, because he said if we call him before, you know, the end of the season, that's our schedule, because I believe he's trying to leave, because it's going to take on town, so we'll get him and then we'll see, we'll evaluate from there and then we'll go to contract with fall and spring if we think we need to continue with it. Because yeah, sitting back and we're both talking about it, might be, with the problem we have, we might be going both, so...
Yeah, and Mike's got some great ideas about how to really get the maintenance up where it needs to be and I want to see the maintenance get where it needs to be, not, you know, take the guys off of that maintenance to go mow, and we kind of saw that process.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. All right, item nine, town plan update, and we have our chairman of our planning commission, Chris Williams, here to tell us about how they're working through the town plan, it's coming up on our five-year review and the planning commission is cranking up for a year's worth of work.
Yes, we are, we're already hard at work, we've nearly completed the review of the existing document, have it all marked up with comments, but I thought it would be appropriate to come and get your input here before we started to write anything. And so we've applied for municipal planning grant from the state, which we expect to get, this would be our third in my tenure, I think, and that'll allow us to pay the Bennington County Regional Commission for the work that they do, which is important, because they always support us, and they're a great resource that we can draw on, but they should get paid for their work. And so we applied for a modest amount and we think things are proceeding as they should. The commission has allocated a staff member to work with Shastberry and so we're in the gathering of information stage and we thought, Tim has come to a bunch of our meetings in the last couple of months and so he's kind of up to date on this, and he's expressed an interest in goals around town infrastructure, especially roads, and you're all privy to what that idea is of doing a mile a year with, you know, fabric and four inches of gravel or whatever the thing is.
Let me just comment on that, that's one thing that I have been advocating here recently, is that we apply more material to the roads and that we make that a plan and apply it to the town plan. And I've been talking that over with Dave and our new road foreman, Michael Yanati, and they've kind of convinced me that we should put that plan on hold for maybe two years, because Mike's got quite a few ideas on how to get a maintenance schedule in place and get the ditching and the brushing, the brush cut back the way they really should be, and then at that point, we'll be in a better position to say where and how much money we really need to spend in material for the gravel roads.
But even then, I don't think specific amounts should be put in the town plan, I think a general, a general comment saying that emphasis should be placed on roads and all sorts, but I'm against saying in the town plan, when we do, that mile a road, this and this, I don't think the town, the town plan should be that specific about what it says, but I certainly am in favor of what we're doing and that sort of stuff. I just don't want to block the next, another select board in this.
Yeah, well, I disagree with you a little bit on specificity and one thing that I'm pushing the planning commission to do is actual, put more plans in the town plan and at this point, I am saying that we're not ready to commit to a mile a year just yet, but I think to the extent we can, we should put specific plans in the town plan and recall, we're not, we're never really locking a select board in, they can modify the town plan, but if all of us agree that, you know, this is the route that we should go, I think it behooves us to, you know, say it out loud essentially and make it happen, and that's what the town plan is meant to do.
Then we spoke about the water.
Yes, the one that we want to put into the town plan, we had a water board meeting tonight, over the next twenty years, we will be replacing all of the water mains in the water system in Shastberry, because they are at end of life. And we have an initial engineering report, we're, we were talking in our meeting about the specifics of how we evaluate what the condition of the pipes is and whether or not we modify the plan as originally put forward, but that is something I believe we should put in the town plan, because that's something that select boards, like I say, for the next twenty years need to be looking at and staying on track with.
Can't be any more specific about a sewer system, I mean, I think there's quite a word in the town, present town plan about the need for a town-wide sewer system.
That's discussed in the present plan, yes.
That's what I'm saying, I don't see how we could be any more specific than what we've got already, because we really...
I took the language from the development committee, Art.
Yes.
So that's in there and nothing on the ground has changed.
No, that's my point, I just, it's important, but I don't know what we can do.
Well, I think that's exactly the kind of thing we ought to take a hard look at, I mean, it's the, you know, we need a sewer system, has been in the town plan for at least two town plans, and I've been paying attention, so that's ten years, and we're not really moving in that direction, so if we're not moving in that direction, I don't think it should be in the town plan. We can, we can talk about the conditions that might lead to it actually becoming an action item, but you know, if it's not, if it's not a plan, it shouldn't be in the plan. For ten years, it hasn't really been a plan and I don't think we have, have one, so it's something to, something to look at again.
Well, let me tell you about what the planning commission is thinking about in terms of what the issues are that aren't really reflected in the past documents. And one of the things that we're looking at is the idea of social capital. Now, what is social capital? Social capital is the voluntary association of citizens to form interest groups that strengthen our community. And examples of this would be the Grange, the North Shastberry Community Club, the Hale Mountain Rod and Gun Club, we have a whole range of these types of organizations, the churches, volunteer fire department kind of fits that profile, although it's a public entity. And we feel that, you know, in a country that's divided by polarizing politics, the idea of social capital starts to become more and more important, this is what makes... This is what makes cohesion in our little community. This is what makes the select board's job easier because we have a functioning community of interested citizens who step forward to build it. We think that this is, is very important in the present time. The other thing we want to talk about is economic development, that Shasbury really hasn't moved forward from the Great Recession, that kind of pall of that economic downturn is still hanging over the community, witnessed in the amount of construction that's going on locally, the number of permits for new houses, the commercial construction, it's just not out there. And so we say that, you know, we have to take note of this, government only has a limited impact on the economy. We can, we can talk about this in different ways, but it, you know, the private sector continues, the two bright lights in the private sector are TAM and William E. Daley, which are both adding about five or six jobs a year over the period from the last town plan. And so we're, we'll go talk with those, with Trevor and Brian Lent, and get the exact numbers on that to put in the town plan. But, you know, we have to look at things like the proposed Shire's Housing Development over on the edge of North Bennington. This is the only major development that's on the horizon for Shasbury. Private sector isn't building anything right now and yet the need is pretty clear that housing for the workforce that's going to work at TAM and at William E. Daley would, would need something like that. There's very little rental housing in Shasbury that's, has any availability. So these are the themes that we want to work into the town plan that we think represent the moment that we're in.
So explain the social capital. How would you work that into the plan?
Well, when a select board gives tax, oh, not tax, what's the right word? Abatement to the Grange, to the community club in North Shasbury, this is reinforcing social capital of voluntary citizen organizations. This is absolutely what you should be doing. And, but, you know, this isn't a discussion that we're used to having. So we want to put it out there and say, well, your role as government, our role as government is, is to look at what makes this community go beyond the government. And that, we think, is voluntary citizen organizations. And social capital is, is notably lacking in, in great parts of the country right now because people move a lot, suburban communities don't connect people the way that a place like Shasbury does. People are kind of, that stuff is fraying all across the country. There's a famous book by a sociologist from Harvard, I don't want to get too, too academic here, but it's a very famous book called Bowling Alone by Robert Putnam, who's a sociologist. And I don't normally read sociology books, but this book had such a reputation that I had to read it. And, and he talks about all the measures of social capital in the country and he measures them. The number of dinner parties that people hold, the number of bowling leagues that exist in the community, you know, these are the things that make this stuff come together and stick together and, and give people trust in one another. And, you know, in a time when politics is very polarized, we think this is very important.
Fellowship churches, things like that.
I mentioned churches, yeah.
So just to note that North Shaft Lions, which is North Bennington and Shasbury Lions Club, had a budget of $82,000. They took in and gave away $82,000 last year.
All right, we'll make sure to point that out.
Yeah. Someone, you know, someone was very vocal and put the surveillance system in and power card and things like that. A lot of it's for security.
So the plan part, that the social capital section would recommend would be things like recommending that we give tax abatements to, to social organizations? What would be the recommendation for it?
Well, not necessarily tax abatements, although in the case of the Grange and the North Shasbury Community Club, it would be, but it would be in more general language that the select board and town government should act to support the voluntary community organizations that create social capital cohesion in our community. And, you know, how does that apply to something like Hale Mountain Rod and Gun Club? Maybe it wouldn't over the next period, but, you know, these are things that kind of provide the glue that we need to kind of make our community governable outside of government.
We need to bring in more businesses too, one of the tax laws.
Well, what was the other piece? Economic development. So we need to bring in more business. Well, my experience is that government has a kind of small impact on the economy, that the economy moves of its own, from its own stimulants. And government is only a small stimulant in the whole range of things. I think that, you know, there's not a whole lot that Shasbury can do to bring in more businesses, you know.
Vermont could see an uptick in business, by the way. Our great commander in chief, Donald Trump, has signed a deal with, just made a deal with Mexico and Canada. So hopefully in Canada, same, we're going to bring some jobs in here. So let's cross our fingers, hope for the best.
Hope for the best.
I guess, again, my, my emphasis, I want to see in this town plan is on the plan part. So I certainly think an economic development section is appropriate. The hard thing to figure out is what do you say we ought to do?
What do we say?
Well, what, what does the plan, what will the plan recommend that the town do in terms of economic development?
That's a good question.
One reason I'm, I'm harping on this is that I had a look at the Brattleboro Town Plan and I've talked to Chris about it. Just the format of the plan is less pros, prosaic, I guess is the word, than ours and more, more organized. In particular, when it has a section, the things that are recommended, the plan part is bullet points at the front of the section. And then comes the, what I call almanac, which describes, you know, how many people, what kind of, you know, energy usage we have, such as that. But in our current town plan, it's kind of hard to find what the recommendations are. You kind of have to just search for the words should to find out what they are. So in this one, we want to, you know, emphasize, these are the things that we're, we're saying should be done. This is the plan.
Okay, well, when I last came before you, we talked about a bylaw on short-term rentals for tourists. Now, this is a change in the bylaw. If it's approved, it would make it easier for ordinary people in Shasbury to convert or build a couple of small tourist cabins on their property and reap some income. Now, that's a real grassroots kind of economic development issue. You know, I think affordable housing is another area that's unrelated, but that we've seen all across the state. It was a major thrust of Governor Phil Scott's initiative, $35,000, $35 million was, was allocated in the initial budget of what Shire's Housing received some. This is an industry in the state of Vermont and, you know, being open to that kind of development would be a measure of economic development in that it provides housing for workforce that's already working in Shasbury.
Can I add one more company to your list of bright spots? The company that bought the feed store has probably put in $150,000, $200,000 in new equipment in the last four years since they bought it for me. Granted, they're in the town of North Bennington only by a couple hundred feet, but it certainly affects Shasbury and that sort of stuff.
Well, it's the basis for agriculture in this area. And yeah, I'm, you know, you see me in there with my small-scale agriculture all the time. Yeah, no, we, we know what's going on down there. You know, I don't know about the investment, but we'll, we'll look into that. We might even call you up and get your understanding of kind of what that means. Because we profile in the plan, the major businesses in Shasbury, and that's one of them, and all that information needs to be updated.
I'd love to talk to you about that.
Okay, good.
I think that we could have got a, kind of make a deal with Bennington too because Bennington's got city sewer and there's a lot of things you can't do without city sewer. And it's going to be really hard unless we can get government grants or something. The problem is, I don't think you can get a lot of government grants for sewer and stuff unless you've got soil balance like Powell had. That they'll give you a lot more help. And I don't really see a Shasbury going to be able to do it awful lot until they got a sewer system like that.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've been saying that for a long time and it's, it's kind of a chicken and egg question. You know, we, it's hard to go to the voters and ask for somewhere between one and three million dollars to build a sewer system with the hope that it'll spur economic development.
Well, the problem is the sewer is going to be illegal in the village area. You're going to ask the people outside of the village, pay for something, they have absolutely no benefit out of it.
Right, right. So yeah, I've kind of, kind of been thinking, you know, you know, when people or when we have some indication that we're really being limited, that, you know, we're getting, we're turning away permits at the DRB to do things in the village because people can't provide for septic on the lot, then it's time to start thinking about a sewer system because then we know it's, it's holding us back. At this point, it's kind of hard to justify it on, on the hope that it'll bring those people here.
I'd like to shift gears here and talk about education for a moment. We're right on the edge, I think, of changing governance in our school system. Act 46 is going to kick in and indications are that the school system will operate henceforth on a single board, that Shasbury won't have their own school board, that there'll be consolidation of Shasbury, Powell, North Bennington, Woodford, which was voted down by six votes in Woodford or something. I mean, the vast majority of people voted for it. I think this state board is going to, or the commissioner is going to request consolidation. What are your thoughts about this going forward? I know this is not your area, but you might, you might have an opinion just the same.
I think education costs are out of control. I think we need to do something to control them. I hate losing the individual control of our school board, but we can't keep paying more and more cost per student, can't keep going on.
Do you think that the consolidation would help that?
I'm hoping that it does. It's not, what we're doing now isn't working.
Well, I was not a fan of Act 46 originally. I became a fan of it when, when I realized it was going to come whether we liked it or not. And I did push pretty hard for us to choose our own destiny in that regard. That vote, as you say, did not work out. So we're at the mercy of the state relative to that. But I don't know that there's really anything for us to say about it except that, you know, we're waiting to see what, what the state tells us is going to be our governance structure. And we'll, we'll live with it because we have to.
And sell our houses, what is it?
So any other?
How about internet connectivity?
Yeah. Self-service.
It, it, yeah, self-service internet connectivity. And it's a statewide problem that nobody seems to be tackling. And everybody talks about it and every governor promises, but the reality is, I think we turn away a lot of entrepreneurial businesses that could thrive and would love to thrive in this rural area, but just cannot get any kind of service without putting up their own stuff. I mean, I have a friend who moved here from DC but had to get a place that was connected. No, we hear this story over and over again. Yeah, and I, you know, and I don't think with our current carrier, that's, I mean, we're one of a, you know, very small group of people that are in, in that organization, you know, services multiple states. But yeah, I mean, I mean, all we could do is probably put a statement in, but the reality is statewide, you know, as long as Burlington is connected, they're fine. But I think the rest of the state is nuts. I mean, the dead zones are horrible and they really limit economic progress. And it's going to be, it's going to be essential and... It's already essential. Yeah, yeah. Well, let me tell you a story about the last town plan. We, we saw this as a major issue, directly tied to economic development, directly tied to attracting people from outside to move here. And we set out with Jim Henderson of the Regional Commission to map service in Shasbury. We're going to map cell service, we're going to map internet, high-speed internet, broadband. And we contacted the carriers and they told us this and they told us that and they told us the other thing. And then we talked to people who lived in those areas and they didn't have any service. And in the end, we couldn't make the map because all the information we had was contradictory. The providers were telling us one thing and the citizens were telling us another. So, you know, every governor from Jim Douglas on has promised to solve this, although I don't think Phil Scott has promised because I think he recognizes how tough this thing is and that, you know, the, you know, people in the government said, well, we're down to last 500 households. Well, baloney, you know, we're not anywhere near there. And the dead zones are, well, you all know where they are. And I'm the last house on my road with high-speed internet. So, you know, we all know what the limitations are and you can't attract people to live in dead zones basically because everybody depends on this stuff. But, you know, what, what do we have in the way of leverage? I think not much. That's the, that's the killer is that we're, we're at the mercy of corporate America. You know, I think of rural Africa that thrives.
Absolutely.
Literally thrives or economy thrives on their access to the internet. And cell phones.
And cell phones. I mean, they, their economy is in their cellphone. And, and it's nuts. I mean, they're, they're hooking up to solar power for, you know, to recharge their phones, but still, you know, and, and here we are. I mean, we, I gotta pay extra in order to screen movies, you know, and it's gotta be a good day, and it's gotta be the right time of day.
Oh, God.
I'm serious. You know, then I go and I unplug my Wi-Fi and plug it back in again and pray that the mouse is running down the wire. I would speak, because I'm at the end of the line on my way.
Uh-huh.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it's, and I don't know where, I don't know where the power, where the push comes from. And maybe we initiate it in the town plan and, and, you know, say a prayer and.
Well, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to use something like the town plan as a new initiative to go to Verizon and all the other providers and say, "Here we are, another five years has passed, the situation is only slightly better," you know, write letters, copy the governor, you know, I recognize the limit to our leverage in this situation, and it's very frustrating.
It's tied to the economic development.
Absolutely.
So, you know, and if we had a real good internet connection, part of the infrastructure, it would be ideal to attract a, a whole different kind of, of industry or economic development. Because we've got everything else.
It's true. I, I can't tell you how many people I know who work based on the fact that they send their product over the internet to the big cities, they're working for big-city wages right here in Shaftesbury, and they might have to travel to New York or Boston one day every couple of weeks, but they do their work here in Shaftesbury, and they get paid accordingly. And so, there's not even any question that this is a major tool for economic development.
There does seem to be a question in our governor's mind, actually. The last time he did his road show through here, I, I was there, I asked him about internet access, and his response was that he, they have been looking at data of places in Vermont that have recently acquired better internet access, and says that they don't see a correlated increase in economic activity there. Which I question, you know, I question how long they've had internet and how long they've been waiting for them to show increased internet activity, but the, the impression I got definitely was that he doesn't see it as a priority to, to, to spend state money to bring internet to places like Shaftesbury. And honestly, I mean, in, in some ways, I don't blame him, because like you say, every governor for the last ten years has promised that we're gonna get better internet, and they've all entered into deals with various internet companies to get it, and in one way or another, those companies took the money but didn't follow through on the, on the commitment. So, it's a.
Changed the.
It's a hard problem to, to solve when you have no leverage. One, you know, one possible model that, it's not really something the government can do, but it is something that has been done, and it's a thing, an example is the play, the thing called EC Fiber, East Central Vermont Fiber, is a nonprofit company, it's a company, but it's a, it's a nonprofit company that is building, building out internet in East Central Vermont, and providing fiber to the home. And they are providing fiber, fiber to the home where the average density of housing is six houses a mile. And they were, they're able to do it in a nonprofit way, and they've got every town around them banging on the door trying to get them to, to get to them, and they're, they're growing as, as fast as they can, but it is a model that, that does work in some places. And it's something that could be done here, but it's not something that, that we do. What, what happened in the case of EC Fiber is, you know, three, three, you know, four, you know, local businessmen got together and decided this is something we need to do, and they started this, this cooperative. I should say EC Fiber is the, I believe that's the communications district, and then Valley Net is the company that actually does the buildup in that case. But that kind of thing, you know, it's, it's kind of like a Putnam block for, for broadband kind of, you know, the same way that the Putnam block is economic development, is driven largely from the, the private sector with minimal government funds at least being provided. It's kind of that, that same sort of thing, so.
But let's Comcast go for houses per mile, a lot more than six, isn't it?
Yeah.
When you call Comcast and say, "I can see the cable down at the end of the road," and they say, "Well, how many houses?" It's about more than six.
Right, yeah. And, and, you know, the big difference there is, is the profit motive.
Yeah, no, I understand.
They're, you know, Comcast is looking at, you know, why should I, you know, run it to South Shaftesbury when I've still got places in, you know, Boston where I can, you know, put fiber that I haven't done yet that'll, I know will pay. The case of the nonprofit is, they're, they're getting it done, but, you know, they're able to just, just barely, you know, maintain cash flow, but not having to, they have a completely different.
Yes.
Calculus for their business model, I guess is the point. It's a nice thing. Okay.
Okay, duly noted. I, I hear your frustration.
Yeah.
I share your frustration.
But, yeah, thanks for coming and getting us talking here. Certainly, if people have other ideas, as you go back and, and think about this more, let Chris know, and let's, let's make sure we, you know, provide input on this plan, because we will ultimately be approving it, and we wanna, we wanna have input along the way, make sure it ends up being the plan we want.
That's why I'm here.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, David, renewal of TAM transfer station contract. Here's a, the contract we have been discussing with TAM, that's signed by TAM for the board of the fourth month. Most of the contractors we've discussed is staying as it was. TAM is raising its fees for items such as tires and white goods, sofa beds, appliances, cowlings, things like that. We are current, we are keeping our current rate structure until we investigate how the new system works up there. But as we all know, especially with recycling, there's no market for it, it's becoming more and more expensive for our contractor TAM to dispose of it, so at, at some point, these rates, remember, have been at one spot for a long time. But everything else is staying the same, and we're not changing these rates now. This is a three-year management contract, renewable, just as they all have been with TAM. His rates are going up some to reflect the higher rates of disposals, under six dollars a ton, which is nine dollars more than the last contract, but that again makes up for the difference we've been talking about. Just for the new system we're gonna have up there, as people will see perhaps even next Monday, perhaps, there's gonna be a series of containers and a power compact on site that will pay two seventy-five a month for, for those in addition, but those containers will be there all the time, pretty much dedicated for our location. And then what we've formalized, what we have been paying when this tax state required organics, we got ahead of the game, had a system in place, so we've been paying twelve hundred dollars a year for the organic system, and that's down in the contract also. Then the payment changes for the next three years will really come from us. In discussions with TAM, as the new, new facility gets underway, we can see what saves, we can accomplish in it, easier movement of materials and people, and a little bit other ways of coming back, maybe we could do something as simple as a kiosk to make the payment easier and more accurate for, for everyone, but those things will come up a little bit further down the road.
So, I need a motion to.
The rate increases around like a disposable, that's been the state mandate anyway, right? From TAM?
I'm not gonna say the state mandate, because that's something that he would have to answer, but the, the rates, basically things like C and D has gone up slightly, tubages have gone up like five dollars, appliances are up to ten dollars, I mean, these are, these are fairly minor increases to begin with. And tires, I think, went up two bucks apiece. You're better off turning your tires into the dealer than trading them in. But, yeah, they're all fair, fairly minor. We've discussed the, the state now allows us to charge for recycling, but we're not gonna be able to discuss that. And that's a burden that we have to carry, because, like I said, there's no market for it, that's fairly well-known. The metal is getting a little bit better now, but we'll just have to see how it goes. We'll see how things change with the new facility. We might have to talk about raising our fees, which have gone up in years and years and years. But then we have to talk about having something like a kiosk where you can swipe a card, put money in, because you don't wanna raise it from one dollar, two dollars a bag, I mean, that's, that's a lot, but any intermediate amount, a fair amount turns into a change nightmare up there, so we'll, we'll address that as, as we get closer.
I make the motion. Okay, we have a motion from Art to enter into the new waste management contract with TAM for three years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero to enter into a new waste management contract with TAM for three years.
If you want, I can go on to the next one.
Yeah, go ahead.
We really don't need to have a vote or anything on, as you remember, when we switched the PACS, their billing cycle and their insurance cycle is on a calendar year, so we're doing, we're just approving the second half of the policy we already agreed to so we can get on a cycle with them. Because we already nothing to vote on, we've already agreed to the prices before.
Right.
I just put it on here to let, you know, I'm doing the paperwork, which is just confirming what we already have here, and the application, which I'm the designated person for anyway. But we, like I said, it's really, we've agreed, they've agreed the original contract to maintain the prices through all 2018. So, this is just to get us on their schedule. So, we'll be looking at this calendar year instead of a fiscal year.
Okay, and you, you're, you're authorized to make.
Yeah, yeah, the original documents, I'm authorized to sign it, so.
Okay, yes, without objection, we'll let Dave do the paperwork on the insurance. Okay, coal haul, window replacement, lower level.
Yeah, part of the construction, which is gonna start on this floor in a couple of weeks, we set the windows, same contract, and we all know those windows have to go. If you have a driving rain, the water actually comes through and floods the cans, it's kind of amusing. But it's, it's also not worth to go. So, we don't really have this budgeted, but out of, out of the general fund balance last year, the, the unassigned fund balance was two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. So, I'd like the board, to ask the board, is to transfer ten thousand of that to all reserves so we can put in these windows and do some plumbing, unexpected plumbing that'll have to be done as part of the project on this floor, because we're gonna have to put in a couple of zones for heat, so that's gonna be an additional little cost, but in the long run, it'll save a lot of money as we control the heat usage up here. Anyway, you heat this one right now, it's, it's a lot, you know, so. That'd bring the fund, the unassigned fund balance down to fifteen point three percent or something like that, which is where it's supposed to be by the vote approval a few years back. So, I think with the use of the, the ten thousand extra, we can put it into this building and keep all the projects going and tighten up the ground floor. And they would also be able to open the windows. Currently, we only have two windows that open at all downstairs.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion for ten thousand dollars in additional coal haul repairs for windows and plumbing. So, a move by Art?
Second.
Second by Ken. Any discussion?
Do we have estimates?
Yeah, eight thousand, seven hundred dollars roughly. Just use the same contractor that's here as, as a continuation, like an add-on to the same project.
Okay.
We don't have a plumbing estimate yet, because the plumber we were gonna use, he retired, so we're looking at another plumber, and he's too busy, so now we're looking at the third plumber, and he'll, he'll be in as it gets closer to starting, but I wanna know we have this lined up so we can move forward.
And that plumber will fit in the budget for ten thousand?
Yeah, yeah, with the ten thousand, we'll fit in. Otherwise, we have my note to come.
Any more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the motion to spend an additional ten thousand on coal haul repairs for windows and plumbing is approved five zero zero.
Okay. Let's see, Town Garage. The Town Garage is, is moving along, we've had a couple of delays with the Morton staff getting here, it's all weather-related. That has given us some more time to work on the site. We hope to have a hundred and twenty feet completed of the roadway leading into the new transfer station, that'll be from the actual gate, a hundred and twenty feet forward. It'll still be a little bit rocky coming in for the first thing, but when we can get the transfer station open, we can have the work site segregated from the, the entrance driveway, which is important. We'll see some new barricades up there, because I asked them to do a better job separating our people from the construction site, because it kind of got out of sequence, otherwise we'd be moved already, you know, so I think it's getting a little too close. And Morton, with the cranes and everything, is gonna need a little space. So, we're ready, they're ready to go forward, they're supposedly going to start this Thursday now, but, you know, it's gonna be pouring tomorrow, so it's pretty hard to predict anything in construction. But once Morton gets going, it's gonna be quick, the building's gonna be up in, in two to three weeks, and then all the work, the majority of the work shifts inside, and the site work will, will finish up as he gets to it. But the site work is, is a bit of a, a bit behind, I would say, but they're addressing that at the best they can, but it's. The overall project is still moving ahead. You know, if we stuck strictly to the plan without improvising, the foundation of the building wouldn't even be there. But we just kept by moving around and working in different areas, it keeps the whole project going. And then we've already made the plans, as I was discussing before, we're not really gonna be leaving here this winter. We have the plan as if we're gonna be here, and then we'll start transitioning over in January or February, you know, and that's, you know, when you get inside a building, things get delayed too, you know, so we'll, we'll just, we'll just see. December twenty-fourth is still, you know, our Christmas present, but, you know, we might, we'll see.
Okay.
But financially, it's, it's still pretty much completely on target. We had, we have a, a bit of wiggle room at the end, which could make up for the material we talked about putting down, what we didn't put in the budget, just came on that wiggle room, you know, the top six inches of surface material. Everything else seems to be pretty much straight and track. The payment system we use in the US Bank and working with Russell has been very good. The payment's going along fine. And I would say the estimates at this point give us enough flex at the end to finish the driveway, but we still have roughly a million dollars worth of building to go, so, you know. I don't think at this stage, we've made some minor changes in things, remember some of the work order changes we have come through, but at this stage, everything's designed, the site works, everything with the sites is decided already, there's nothing else on the site, just needs to get done. And inside the building, unless something pops up while it's going up and somebody says we really should move that, you know, I wouldn't think there's gonna be any change there. It is a free-plan canned building, we've all, already got in one, and they've built it up, so it should, should go along pretty smoothly. I think it's crossing. That's about it for that.
Okay. All right, then we're ready to wrap up here. I should mention, we discussed it before the cameras started rolling, we were added a, in the executive session, to discuss personnel issues to the agenda this evening, we'll get to that in just a second. we'll get to that in just a second. Reviewing action items, going back a couple of meetings, water fountain, any progress on that?
Yeah, and I need to go back and tell me, I forgot for a second, someone from Joe added me, but just the water fountain for a second. We had a meeting, our plumber quit, retired, so we needed a plumber, and we, well, we had a plumber, but now we have to find another one. And of course, we're turning the water off, so we're probably just going to turn the water off. A committee member had an interesting suggestion of fountains she's seen inside, like schools, that have an ability so you can fill a water bottle conveniently like that, which I haven't seen an exterior one, but we all thought it'd be worthwhile looking and putting it in the spring. Let's face it, everyone's going to the field with a water bottle, so instead of staying there with a little thing. Yeah, I hadn't even thought about that, and it was a good suggestion, so we're going to look for that. We have to close it, I mean, we're at the point where we have to close it by the end of the month, so we'll purchase one and have it installed in the spring when we open up. We have to find one of these first.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but I heard they're getting this done. It makes sense if it's athletic field.
Indoor ones, I see.
Yeah, I haven't seen any outdoor ones, but I can't imagine how you couldn't have it outdoor, if you have fountains outdoors. But I think it'd be, it'd be very convenient for all the people there.
Yeah, let's just make sure we purchase it and get it, we have water when we open it up in the spring. We've dragged our feet too long on...
Yeah, I agree. We almost have the cameras in. Something wrong with the, maybe it's putting a drive in or something.
Okay, I'll work on that. Put that down.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that.
And then, Ken, if I can go off on a second for the fire chief. Fire, their ongoing construction program is replacing more windows. They have an opportunity to buy $6,000, $5,000, well, nearly $7,000 of windows for $5,800 in marketing miles, but they have to get on it in a couple of days. So he just wanted, you know, run that by the board, and so we would have permission to go ahead and purchase these windows. They were going to store them in the firehouse so they can put them in in the spring, but it's an excellent price for the windows.
It's all within your budget.
It's all their budget, yeah.
Yeah, so we approved them buying windows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just wanted to make sure the board knew.
Absolutely.
Tell them to go ahead, yes.
And that, that's it, so.
Okay. And then, the next meeting, we talked about, you're getting a legal opinion on the Barking Farm Dogger, we're waiting to hear back from that. Tonight, in the water board meeting, Jim Guinness is going to make sure the gentleman who hasn't been getting his water bill and whose penalties and interest we abated, because he hasn't been getting his water bill, make sure we've got his current address and get that straightened out. David's going to express the slight board's concern about the condition of Route 78 through the village to V Trans. David is going to contact the contract mower and see if we can line him up for another season. And then Art, you're going to check and see what the issue is with the cameras at the park.
I just want to, his contract with us has been for twice a morning. Are we going to go for that or just once more?
I think what we want to do is go for the spring, and that's the only thing he's really talking about at this point. And then we'll see, we'll be able to evaluate the fall and the spring and see where we can go, and we can, there's nothing written, so we have to bid in the winter for this. We'll bid out for the fall if need be.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think that would work.
Okay.
Because actually, the contract with Hosley is, we pay in winter and spring, so, I mean, it works the same, right? So we can see how it goes. But I don't know if we want to do both. I think we can, have to try to find out. But I don't want to contract out the fall and find out if we can do it ourselves, you know.
Well, I mean, we've been doing it ourselves, and it's worked out well, and we're getting ready to really ramp up the maintenance. I think if we can get two more seasons out of the contract mower, that's just more ditching that we get done from our crew for the next two years.
Well, I'd like to inquire, if the board wanted to inquire if he's interested.
He's trying, he's trying to retire.
Yeah, he said he would take the spring for, if we ask him now. And then we can always go out and bid for the fall.
Well, ask him if he wants to do the fall also and then bring it back to us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll scan, okay, scan, okay.
Okay, good. All right, then, I need a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Oh, yeah, one more, what you can. And that, more, that, yeah. Yeah, we got money for that, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's all in the budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It's almost exactly to the penny, $500 less than what I could have done to replace it.
All right, good.
I'll move the adjournment.
We have a motion from Tony to move into executive session. Second by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.